All right, it's 9:30. We want to be cautious of everyone's time here. So let's start our work session on the budget. Our first item on the agenda is call to order. So I'm calling the meeting to order. Our next item is the budget work session. We have Al and Jeff and Marvin here to go through our booklets with us today. Everyone should have received one of these. All right. So Al, you want to start us off?
Yes, good morning again. Well, here we are again. Today, we're talking about the general fund budget. And let's... So far, you have adopted budget guidelines earlier in the process. That was done way back on May 31. The CIP project plan was approved by finance on the 16th. And then, of course, the October 1 budgets were approved. I should have said in my too brief of an intro that this is a unique year because we're moving to a 10-1 fiscal year next year. And so what you're looking at this year is a nine-month budget. So that's a little bit different than any budget we've looked at at Kent County in the past. And so you just need to keep that in mind as we look at the numbers. Dedicated millage tax levies were adopted by the board on September 22. And so once again, we're going to jump right into the general fund today. I'm doing a brief overview, and then Jeff will come up and go over revenue, and then Marvin will come up and go over expenditures. And of course, if you have questions, just let us know. And so we're summarizing the general fund statements included on pages 27, 26, and 27 of the annual budget summary and highlighting the key changes included in the 2023 proposed general fund budget. And again, keep in mind the year-over-year comparisons, for the most part, are not going to be apples-to-apples because of that nine-month budget transition that I just mentioned. And so that numbers will look a little bit... So again, ask questions as we go, or certainly at the end, we'll also have a time there to... General fund budget is very static year-over-year, other than annual increases in property tax revenue and personnel expenses. Typically, the budget expands or contracts with changes to existing revenue programs, services, and/or staffing levels. On the screen, you can see some of the key changes included in the proposed general fund budget. These are discussed in the transmittal letter, and we'll see most of these today as we move forward. All in all, the proposed budget has relatively few changes from the prior year.
Thank you for having us this morning. So as Al said, I'm going to go over the revenues, and you'll hear a repeating theme today that a lot of the comparisons from... Going from a 12 to a nine-month budget. So you can see here, we're going to start with the total sources of revenue. Going from 193.1 million actual in 2021, we adopted a 199.5 million. And our nine-month budget is 184.2 million, or a decrease of 7.7%. Look at the uses. Again, we're going to show a decrease, 190.9 million actual in '21. We adopted 199.5 million in '22, and we're expecting 164.2 million in a nine-month budget, or a decrease of 17.7%. And this is going to result in a positive margin of $20 million. And we've discussed this previously. This is just a point in time, and I'll show you a slide here in a second. Basically, because we report cash at a point in time, instead of 1231, it's going to be at 9:30, and that's our hard point of taxes or our high point of revenues for the year. So if you look at the next slide, you can see our cash flow pro forma. You can see now on 9:30, the high point, because all of our taxes are collected, hence resulting in a $20 million, I'm going to quote, surplus, but it's a point-in-time surplus, and we'll spend that down through December. So our fund balance hasn't changed in total, just that the cash flow when we report it... Point of moving to a 9:30 budget. So yeah, happy to answer any questions on that.
Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you. Hey, Do, that graph has looked eerily similar year after year after year after year. So it just proves the point that we really need the cash flow to carry us through those months. I'm just making the comment that that graph really hasn't changed in the looks.
That's exactly right. Yeah, the cash flow cycle is the same. Again, it's just a reporting date. When we report it now, it's going to be at the highest level because our taxes all come in by September.
All right, any other questions on this item? Commissioner Bukowski.
But in theory, this is a, you know, current 12 months. But now, when we shift the 12 months this way, the graph, it's like we collect the taxes the last two months of the fiscal year, not the, you know, this is months eight, nine of the fiscal year. So again, just from a cash flow perspective, we're always going to be hoping for collections. I mean, it's a very pretty, pretty safe hope, but it...
It's pretty stable, yes. Been stable for, as far as I can remember, yes. Our collection rate, when we look back, it's always usually around 92, 93%, if I'm remembering correctly, and the end of March. And it's... That has fluctuated very little, very little over the years.
The cash flow shouldn't be impacted by this at all.
Cash flow will not be impacted, no.
Yeah, which is easy to do. Yeah. So again, though, we're always, we're always collecting almost after the fact with the change of the fiscal year, in the sense that as we're collecting in August and September, and then what is, what's, you know, not paid on time, then the treasurer goes out and does all the collection, and we're made whole through the process. But it's, again, it's, oops, sorry, I guess, almost reiterating Commissioner Morgan's comment. From a fiscal year perspective, we're even further out over our skis, in the sense that we collect at the tail end of the fiscal year. I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying it's a real thing, right?
I'm not completely understanding. I mean, the due date's 9/14, right? So most of our taxes, almost all of them...
Yeah, I get that. But all I'm saying is that the fiscal year is going to start on October 1, and the taxes that were collected in September are to pay for the next year, or the taxes of the next September are to reimburse us for what we've just paid for. And it just is a, as opposed to kind of just going along in time. I don't know. I mean, maybe it's just irrelevant, and it's trying to get my arms around this change in the fiscal year and how our local taxes work.
So again, I think we typically will collect about 92, 93% by the due date. So we'll have 92, 93% of taxes in by September 30, typically. And by the end of March, when we turn them over to Lincoln, it typically goes up to 98, 99%. So during that six-month time period from 10-1 to 3-31, there is a collection of roughly 6% typically. So three months of that will be under, all of that will be under the new fiscal year, yes. But we still don't anticipate any cash flow issues because of this.
I think there's another way to think of this. So if you go to, if you're on a 12-31 year, we have spent down a portion of the taxes that we collected by September 14. And so there's a different balance. Right now, we're going to show, though, most of that tax is still available because we're closing on September 30. So it makes, because of the earlier closing date, it just shows that we have a lot more money. And then we're going to spend down that, three months of that revenue over the end of the year. So it's just, it's just a point-in-time change. It really doesn't change anything else.
But then the next year, as October 1 of '23, we'll collect taxes in that next August and September. So we'll, we won't need to carry that three months. So will we net $20 million from an accrual perspective?
It'll work the same every year because we're just changing the timing of the collection. We'll always collect more by mid-September, and we'll always spend less over in that current fiscal year from 10-1 through December 31 because we're ending the fiscal year on 9:30. So that cycle, we're just kind of changing the cycle to a different point in time.
But if you go back to the previous slide real quick, the 24 budget will show 184 plus or minus as total sources, and the total uses will be 184. The total, and the total uses won't be 224, and so, or whatever, 204. So in this change of fiscal year, at some level, we're netting $20 million. Like, because this $20 million will carry forward in time. Because every fiscal year after this change will have the full 184 of revenue, correct?
It's just a symptom of the fiscal year, the sort of fiscal year. Cash flow, the thing to keep in mind is the cash flow chart will not change.
Okay.
Cash flow chart will stay the same. The fund balance will be larger, only because it's reported at a different period in time.
But then the fund balance will be larger, but could not that fund balance be spent?
It'll be permanently larger, and you want to maintain that fund balance because if we reported fund balance at that time every year, that's what we'd be. But we don't, we report it on December 31, or we have historically. So at December 31, fund balance is naturally lower. At December 30, it's naturally higher. So the fund balance will be higher because of the point in time in which it's reported.
No, I know the fund balance, but back to that budget sheet, if there's $20 million sitting there in 2024, that, that $20 million is just going to be on our balance sheet forever?
That's the increased reported fund balances. It's just a symptom of the time, the 9:30 year. If we carry the year out...
Out 12 months.
We go back to zero.
But we'll never carry the year out because the next year will be all there.
The next year will be all there, it'll be a balanced budget with no positive margin.
It's just because there's three months.
But no, every, every year forward will be zero, but this one year will be plus 200, or plus 20, and that plus 20 will always remain on the books.
Yeah, I guess it's that, that fund balance level at September 30 that I can imagine that if we recorded fund balance on September 30, it's always going to be higher. Because we're cutting it off at September 30, we have a positive margin. If we didn't have a positive margin, we basically have the same fund balance as September 30 if we had December 31, and you don't want that. Because that would totally change the cash flow chart.
All right, I'll leave it.
Commissioner Antor.
Actually, Marvin answered my question, but I really appreciate it. Commissioner Bukowski, you got your bean-counting hat on.
I don't know what hat it is.
I like that. No, that's a good question. I had the same questions, too. I, I, it's kind of loud. You answered the question, but I guess, might be a little late for this, but I had never really fully understood why we, you know, we go from calendar to fiscal. What prompted that after being calendar forever? What, what changed, I guess? People ask me...
So, to be fair, Marvin's been asking to do this for 20 years, I think, since he's been here. A lot of our budgets start 10-1. As you know, the health fund, a lot of our grant funds in the state of Michigan is also a 10-1 budget. So we're basically, we don't keep two sets of books, but we have to manually do a lot of entries that last quarter of the year for these nine or 10-1 budgets. Now we don't have to do that extra work. So this will free up fiscal staff to do some other things we've been wanting to do without having to add staff. So it's really an efficiency thing, and to align with the state of Michigan.
But the why was, I propose, I did the same thing at Ottawa, and it allows us, in essence, to not do two budgets and two audits every year. So I think it's more transparent to the public as well.
So this has just evolved to this point where it makes more sense, and I just wonder if you were working on it.
Well, we didn't see the light back then.
No, we did. And I've been a proponent of this for a long time, this change. But this topic that we're discussing right now was one of the main reasons that it wasn't reported. Because it makes the fund balance, for those who don't, who may not understand, look larger, just because it's reported at a different point in time. If you reported fund balance every month, at September, you'd see it be higher, October would be a little lower, November would be a little lower. But we don't, we report fund balance once a year. We report it at the end of fiscal year when the audit is done. And at the end of fiscal year now, it's going to be September, and so it's naturally going to be higher.
Marvin, I trust, you know that.
At that point in time.
It's the same. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I, I'll say out loud what I think I understand, and hopefully it doesn't add to any, any confusion. The, so Commissioner Bukowski was asking a good question, like the, are we spending, you know, the September influx of dollars? Are we spending that in the next year or the current? And as I understand it, I mean, that's the, like, the point of the, the fund balance policy is because effectively, we've already spent it, like, we expect in September to get, you know, X number of dollars. And so we plan, and we spend that throughout the year, January through August. And so because of that, we're, that's why the fund balance policy exists, so that we have the cash to make up that time because taxpayers aren't sending, you know, monthly checks. And, and so that's, it's because it is, like, we're spending that year's money before we have it, effectively. And if, this is kind of just an artifact of our fund balance policy, you know, where it was. If we had a fund balance policy that said, you know, where the bottom is, you know, we, in, our fund balances in May, we never get below 30 million, or whatever that number is, that then the fund balance policy wouldn't have to change because of this timing, because we would be expressing it as like the, that lowest point of the graph. But because we had it at the end of the fiscal year, and now that the end of the fiscal year is moving, we're effectively keeping the same policy, but it's a different number because of the different timing point on the graph. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. And when we talked about doing this originally, we did anticipate having to change the fund balance policy, but we wanted to wait a year or two until we knew what that fluctuation was before we put it... We do anticipate that will change.
Commissioner Morgan. Did you have a question?
I think...
You're good.
Been pretty much talked about here. This is snapshot in time, correct?
Correct.
In a smooth out?
Correct. Cash flow line does not change.
Got it.
Right, Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. You know, not to beat this horse even farther, but if there's one thing that at least helps me understand this, it's the fact that even though our revenue stream is not a constant trickle, our expenditures, with some exception, are. And given the fact that our, this 10-month, or even technically nine-month budget, right, only actually is a reduction of 17%, that shows me that, you know, my guess is, once we return to 12-month budgets, they will be more in line with what we saw in '21 and '22.
Correct.
And so we'll likely see a one-time net increase, and would likely just then have to maintain it. So we're not expecting to see 20 million in laps.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? All right, you can move on.
Okay. So moving down to tax category, you can see taxes make up 64.8% of the revenue in the general fund. It is estimated to increase $7 million. These are 6.2% from the prior budget. It's proposed to be 119.2 million, again, up 6.2% from the adopted last year. So seeing good increase in taxable SCV growth in this next year. If it's not very high, we'll, we'll probably have another very high increase next year, Estimated taxable value calculation is 29.556 billion, which is 4% increase over the prior years. You know, these will be finalized until the spring of '23, when the assessing department gets all their work done. You always have to worry about the Headley Amendment, although with the high inflation rate, that may not come into play next year. We'll have to wait and see. Here's our Headley Amendment impact. We always like to show this. 2016, we were at 6.0596 mils. You can see throughout time, general fund was not impacted until 2019 because we never typically levy the full amount. But you can see the reduction since 2019, and it's amounted to about 4.2 million in lost revenues on the general fund, or 1.493 mils. 4.2 million reduction. $6 million across all county millages for the Headley reduction. You can see senior veterans and the senior millages and the veterans was recently re-approved this year, back to the .5 original, so there will be no reduction at this point on those two villages because they were back to the half percent, .5, or .5% and .05%. Intergovernmental revenues make up 10.8% of the total resources and uses. We're showing a decrease of 22% to 19.9 million. And again, it's primarily related to the difference in the change of fiscal years. On an annualized basis, state revenue sharing is expected to increase 1.3 million or 10% from the prior year, and the state has made some changes to that calculation. Charges for services show a decrease of 5.8 million or 20.6%. Again, attributed to the shortened fiscal year, mainly related to 1.8 million decrease in real estate transfer tax, a 1 million decrease in recording fees, and 2.3 million decrease in public safety fees. And next year, it should be back to more historical levels. Interest and rents make up 1.8% of the total, decrease 19% to 3.3 million. Again, interest rates are up a bit with some of the changes the treasurer is making to investments. But again, the shortened year, we're expecting that to be down 19%. Other revenue makes up 2.6% of the total, showing a decrease of 2.3 million, or 32.8%. And then lastly, transfers in category shows a decrease of 7.9 million or 35%. And this is attributed to the correction in pension fund decrease, 22%. And the Lincoln Tax Fund, 3.7 million. We are not transferring, or not proposed to transfer that in, we're holding that in that fund as we discuss future uses of perhaps internally financing our details. No discussions have really been had on that yet, but we're being very conservative and keeping that revenue there for the time being. So if there are questions on revenue, I will turn it over to Marvin to go over expenses.
Commissioner Coleman.
Back on the slide before, I, just trying to keep straight in my head, what, so the... Are all of these cut to like a nine-month equivalent?
Correct.
Okay, so even the taxes, that's just a nine-month portion? It's not the 12-month portion?
I believe taxes are the full portion because we collected them.
Because property taxes are due in September.
Okay.
All the collections will be approved back and booked in September. So that's part of the reason, the biggest reason, why you're seeing that positive margin of $20 million.
Right, right. Okay, so that, that 119 is the, the total revenue from taxes, as if we were going to spread it over 12 months. The other numbers are spread over just the nine months. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
You know, over the last six years, I'd say we've seen unparalleled growth. Never, I don't think we've ever seen anything quite like what happened here in West Michigan. Conversely, we're, there's some indicators showing that we may be in for a major market adjustment, a housing bubble, possibly. There's a lot of things that don't make a whole lot of sense right now, and I'm wondering what we're doing. As far as I know, you don't have a crystal ball, but projecting, I would say, it would serve us well to project into the future that this isn't going to continue at the rate we were at. There's certain adjustments that have to be made, and I'm wondering how prepared we are for what may be coming in the near future, as far as, you know, tax collections and our increases and stuff. It may come to a grinding halt for a while, and I'm just wondering if we're prepared for that.
Yeah, we obviously saw that after the Great Recession. The good thing about having property taxes as your primary revenue source is that you have a few years to make decisions on that because of the Headley reductions and the gap between SCV and taxable. Now, I believe, I think our gap is larger than it's ever been. So the time it would take for SCV to drop to the taxable level to impact that would be probably several years. So that does give us some flexibility to work out correction plans as needed if we have another Great Recession or some other similar thing. So, City Grand Rapids income tax immediately impacted, it's a lot quicker decisions they have to make, the balance of budget. We have some leeway to that, we have some years to plan for it, so. We also are, continue to be conservative. You know, we, we fund our capital, so there's some, some things we could do there. And other things that comes with conservative, that we could make adjustments as needed.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, as I recall, Mike, oh, Mike, Mike's still on. It was like, almost with property taxes, almost a three-year window when I went through this the first time. So it gives us plenty of time to make adjustments, as opposed to income tax, which is immediately...
Thank you. Okay.
And on what Jeff said, if you turn the page, variance between assessed value and taxable value. And really, it's kind of, uh... taxable value, while assessed values are growing at a rapid pace, it makes that margin that much bigger. And so when things do turn south, you'll have more time to grow out of it because you got that big gap between taxable value and assessed value. Actual values will still go up as long as they're not capped, and now the gap is as large as it's ever been, so. Sometimes it doesn't, but this will give you more room to potentially grow out of it than we, you might have had 15 years ago. I guess the proper term, the proper term is that really the taxable values will be less impacted because they'll still be allowed to grow because they're not capped, and that the graph on page 86 shows. Okay, next, we're going to look at the proposed general fund budget by category and by function. We're going to start with the expenditures by category on page 26 of your budget book. All category makes up 50.7% of the total proposed budget, shows a decrease of $19 million or 18.6% from the prior year. 19.3 time equivalent positions included in the proposed budget, 38 of which are in the general fund. Budget wage increase for 2023 is 3.5%. Health and RX benefits will go up 4.8%, and the pension rate will be up 14.8%. BIs make up 1.6% of the total proposed budget, and shows a decrease of $400,000 of 13.7%. Items in this category, for the most part, are budgeted at 75% of the prior year budget, except for fuel costs. Gasoline grease is expected to go up 13.8% or approximately 52% on an annualized basis. Charges make up 23.6% of total use, 9.5 million or 19.7%. Category include janitorial services, which are up, expected to go up 17.1% or approximately 56.2% on an annualized basis. Prices up 14.1% or approximately 51.8% on an annualized basis, and heat costs are estimated to go up approximately 33.4.
Commissioner Wooden?
By, just to be clear, by an annualized basis, you're expecting that to be the change if this were a 12-month budget?
12-month budget.
Okay.
Trying to do, trying to do an apples to apples as best we can, but it's difficult to do because sometimes you can't tell on some things whether they're front-loaded, back-loaded, and it takes a lot of analysis and there's a lot of lines, and so we just give you an approximate idea.
Thank you.
Commissioner Legrand?
Thank you. I'm one...
Probably similar because what we have, this is our in-house portion of the liability insurance is funded, and we kind of have an internal service fund. So it's kind of treated like the pension. So when, when 100% funded, the rate stays low. When you go below 100% funded, the rate goes up a little bit. When you're above 100% funded, the rate goes down a little bit. It's the same concept with the liability insurance. We have a targeted reserve that we work with our, they monitor it, and at the rate if we're a little low, the rates go up. If we're high, the rates go down. We're seeing our reserve levels low, and that's due to... Last year or so, so. Those at this point, but that's... Kind of the times, really. At in other areas, contracts that are renewing, cost run up, just...
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. Have we determined the increases on annualized basis of our contracted services? Do we believe they are increasing on a rate faster than our own personnel cost increases?
Yeah, in some cases, we are seeing that. When you're looking at janitorial services, that's, I guess, that line. But yeah, I think we are seeing that in some cases because it is, as Al described, it's difficult to maintain staffing levels, and the costs are going up and the demand's going up, and I'm not saying that it's higher, it would be higher if your question is, would it be cheaper to do it in-house? I'm not sure that's the case, not long-term anyway, maybe in the short-term maybe, but long-term, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that. I don't think that's the answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor?
Sign of the times, and I get that. I think that you're absolutely right, but we're probably on the low end potentially of the sign of the times. It may get a lot worse. This may be just the beginning of what's coming. There certainly doesn't seem to be any indicators that things are going to get better. People can't find work, supply chain, everything's, I've never seen anything like this. My guess is it's going to get worse because there doesn't seem to be any solution.
Right, and unfortunately, this is just the timing, you know? We hadn't seen this before now with the, with the janitorial services because we are under contract. Now, we're entering into a new contract, a longer term, three-year contract, it is. The cost is probably maintained over three years, but longer than that, yes, it's hard to tell at this point.
Could you just touch on heating costs a little bit?
Yeah, utility costs are up, heating costs are up more than any, just because the cost of fuel is up, and that's...
That's staggering.
Hopefully, this is worst-case scenario. We see actual results come in better than...
That's why I was wondering if we're paring on the side of caution on this. Thank you, Marvin.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hennessy?
I'm going backwards to personnel. So, so does this factor in? I'm curious about the increase in personnel costs as we talk about contractual services too. You know, how much of an increase we'll have in our employee pay percentages or our own contractual costs, such as temporary workers that, you know, we hire sort of on a contractual basis at the Parks Department or something like that? I mean, how do we fact, how is our own increases in personnel costs being factored into these numbers?
Well, the, I'm not totally sure I understand the question. This, this personnel budget does include the new positions that I mentioned.
Right.
It includes these rate increases that are, that are on the screen here. The wage increases haven't been settled yet. Those are still under negotiation, but the 3.5% in wage increases is what's in the proposal budget.
Okay, 3.5%. Are we changing, are we having trouble filling some of, I'll call them contractual positions, but temporary positions, seasonal positions? Are we having trouble with that? Are we increasing the cost, increasing what we're paying for things like that?
Possibly. I don't have a great answer for that, but I do know that it is a challenging time to hire folks right now. There's more, obviously, a lot more jobs available than there are effective employees, so it is becoming more challenging, and I'm not sure exactly what's been done in various instances to, to fill those vacancies. And if raising the wage, I guess, is happening. I'm not sure. I don't have an answer for that. It's more of an HR question.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? We can move forward.
Next, we look at capital. Capital makes up 1.8% of the total proposed budget and shows an increase of $5,000 or 2/10 of 1%. The increase is primarily our increase in the sheriff's capital outlay budget for vehicles and equipment. Transfers out makes up 25.3% of the total budget and shows a decrease of 8.1 million or 16.3%. Changes in the transfers out, the transfer out to lodging excise tax is down $300,000. In 2022, we budgeted $300,000 for lodging excise tax due to COVID concerns. That, that fund has since stabilized. The transfer out is not going to happen in '22, and there is no transfer out budgeted in '23. Transfer out to the CIP fund is down $1.3 million. That can be attributed mostly to the decrease set aside for strategic capital from 4.3 million to 3... Out to the debt service fund is down $800,000, and that's just due simply to the timing of the debt service payments. We have payments that are due in June. We have payments due in December, so obviously, December will show up in the next fiscal year. And transfers out to the special project funds for the guardianship program, the sheriff programs are up approximately 25% on an annualized basis and 15% respectively. Okay, now we'll look at the general fund by function, which you can find on page 27 of the budget book. General government function makes up 20.1% of the proposed budget and shows a decrease of $8 million or 19.7%. Drilling down into this function, we see the proposed budget for facilities management is $12.2 million, and that's down 1.9 million or 13.3%. And the facilities management budget is one, an additional full-time maintenance tech position. Other areas of increase include janitorial services already are up 21.1%. Liability insurance is up 10.1%. Heating costs are up 10.6%, and there's $300,000 in the facilities budget for maintenance on the new fleet garage in North Campus facility.
Commissioner Legrand?
These are actual increased rates. The other ones were annualized, so I didn't annualize them in this slide. So this, this is the nine-month budget increase over prior year 12-month budget. If I annualize these out, they would look more like a 50...
Gavin. Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. So just to make sure, as I'm seeing these, you know, percentages, here's what I'm thinking, just making sure I'm keeping this straight in my head. So the percentage change, if it's like the treasurer's office, negative 25%, that's effectively flat, exactly what it was before. The IT, negative 18. So that's actually growing that area versus policy administration, negative 33, because it's below the negative 25. That's actually a reduction in that area. Like, so I'm judging these based on the negative 25. Am I, am I thinking about this straight?
100% correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Move on.
Resources budget, the proposed budget's $1.8 million. It's a $234,000 decrease or 11.3%. The HR budget includes two additional full-time equivalent human resource specialist positions. Policy admin proposed budget is a little over $4 million, 4.1 million, and shows a $2 million or 33.1% decrease as compared to the prior year. Changes in this, in this budget include a $1.9 million reduction in the contingency line. If you recall, in '22, we budgeted a $2 million contingency in the admin budget for potential COVID issues, new initiatives and new personnel. Building insurance is up $10,000. There's $200,000 in the proposed budget for Zen City social media software. There's $33,000 in the budget for contract labor for legal services. $1,000 in this budget for board computer.
Any questions on these items at all? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. I know it's a small amount, but the Zen City social media software, could we get a little bit of an explanation on that?
Yes, we added that earlier this year, and basically Zen City is a software that basically reports public sentiment, positive, neutral, negative, for a different jurisdiction that is set up, a physical jurisdiction. So it's set for Kent County, so it doesn't look at URLs, it doesn't give names, it doesn't violate anyone's privacy, but it, oh, sorry, it's a really good way.
It's not functioning.
It's, it's, I call it like a 24/7 citizen or resident survey because you can get pretty instant feedback. I'll give you one example on how we use it as a tool. So after the Patrick Loyola shooting, you know, hearing about what happened after the George Floyd riots, we had basically over $600,000 in damage to get to our stop loss to our county facilities. So at some point, I had to make a decision about how much we were going to armor our facilities, what kind of violence were we expecting? And of course, we have this building, we have 321 Ottawa where IT is, of '82, Ionia. Trying to figure out what should we do? And so the public gets really confused about what cities and counties do, and so we were curious whether we were getting negative sentiment regarding the Loyola shooting. So what we, we put out a search through Zen City to see what were people connecting Kent County with. What we found was that it scanned, it, it basically looked, pulled the sentiment out of 750,000 messages on social media, and the words Kent County were only mentioned five times. That led to a decision where we put fence around the courthouse, but not the construction blocks with the fence on top, which saved a lot of money. And we put boards on the inside of the prosecutor's fence around that, and we didn't do it. I mean, that's the kind of thing we can use it for is just, there's times if we put out a press release, we can gauge reaction almost instantly and actually change our press release if we think we've... And then we also did two surveys this year. That was the additional cost. We'd like to use... And, and also got some positive results from that. That's the software, Lori, we're basically added two software programs and eliminated hitting the right tools in place. We have delivery. That's how we built our stakeholder list. I hope it's... 90, actually 91 or 92,000 hooked.
Thanks, Al. Commissioner Antor?
Zen City social media software, can that be gamed by organizations? Can they purposely mislead through a lot of traffic? For instance, I'm just talking about the Shot Spotter, which has been proposed where you can have technology and it'll recognize a gunshot, send all your resources over to that gunshot in a real quick time, but that can be gamed. The reason why I don't like it is because if I want to knock off a liquor store, I want to, I'll have a buddy go down the road two miles and shoot a gun in the air. It takes everybody over to that point. Can this be gamed similarly?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I'll ask that question, but I don't believe so because it literally is looking at the random messages that are out there at any given time. And with the survey, it'd be really hard to game this, I believe. I mean, I'll ask the question, but I don't believe so.
Well, it all takes us some organization and a lot of people willing to put out bogus, I don't know. I'm just thinking, you know, these days I don't trust anybody, so.
Let's keep our questions focused on the budget for right now. We can talk about that offline more.
Well, I mean, this is, this is something we're spending money on, so.
All right. Any other questions regarding the budget?
We are spending money on this.
All right. Marvin, we have a few more minutes. I do have a hard stop at 10:30, so I know we have another work session on the 18th.
Okay, we'll get through this by 10:00. Next, the public safety budget or the sheriff budget is 36.2%. That's a total budget, that's a $12.1 million, 17.3% decline as compared to the prior year. Sheriff budget includes additional two full-time equivalent deputy positions in their general fund budget. Areas of increase or change include a $900,000 increase for the animal control budget as compared to last year's adopted budget. Overtime's up approximately 20% on an annualized basis. Liability insurance is up 23.8%. Inmate healthcare is up approximately 11.2% on an annualized basis. Fuel costs or gas oil grease is up 19.4%. Capital outlay is up 12.2, 12.6%. Judicial function makes up 13.3% of the total uses and shows a decrease of $5.6 million at 20.4%. Primary change in the judicial function is the probate court budget. Probate court shows an increase of 123,000 or 7.4% and includes... Probate court shows an increase of one hundred and twenty-three thousand or seven point four percent, and includes additional court clerk positions, one additional full-time assistant supervisor position, and these positions are, are added to support the new judge, probate court judgeship.
Yeah, Commissioner Antor?
I just heard on the way here this morning, our prosecutors asking for a new court for domestic violence. That'd be similar to like what we do for the veterans' court, have a court that's just going to be for domestic. Is that something that is part of this discussion? I, I'm catching you off-guard, I just heard about this morning.
Not that I'm aware of, and so this is actually the first I've heard of it.
Are you aware of that, Al, if they ask?
I mean, it's, it's one of the ARPA proposals.
Okay.
So it's not in this budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Mulkowski?
Yeah, since you have the reverse button, if you went back to the sheriff, and, you know, the overtime costs going way up, my assumption is that's based on the fact that we have a lot of vacancies, so therefore, people have to cover. You know, a restaurant can close on Tuesday night for lack of personnel, the jail cannot. And so with this, I mean, how are we, we commissioners, able to help fill those positions? I mean, I know the sheriff's doing tons for recruitment, I mean, again, where, where are we from a, a level of force perspective, both in the jail and on road patrol? And are we just going to keep seeing our overtime costs escalate? Because again, we can't not do these things, at least as it relates to jail and, and road patrol.
I did meet with the sheriff and undersheriff last week, and so this is really up to date, but as of this time, they don't have vacancies on road patrol, but there's a large number of new hires that are in the pipeline. You know, it takes six months to get somebody fully ready to be on their own, on the road, and so really, the overtime, even though we're at full staff on road patrol, we're still seeing the overtime to backfill those positions as these folks go through that process. You know, I do not recall the numbers on the jail, we are planning to do a wage study for the. I'll have to get that to you, I don't have that number.
All right, Commissioner Wooden?
My question was about the jail, I'm good.
Commissioner Antor?
I appreciate that question, because we are seeing across the board, officers not sticking around their twenty-five and out. City Detroit right now is losing one officer per day, per day, and that's being projected across country and certainly in this state. So I think those numbers are going to continue, unless something magical happens, we're going to continue to see a, a huge decline in personnel and a constant influx of trying to get new people on board. I think it's going to be extremely costly, and I'm just hoping we're, we're planning on that, because I think that's a fact. I don't think we're going to get away from the reality of that situation. And I don't know, I'd love to see the projections over the last couple of years of retirements. How long are people staying now compared to what they used to? It used to be twenty-five, and now it wasn't necessarily when they're getting out, but now it seems to be kind of the goal, to get to twenty-five and, and leave, so, just something to be thinking about.
All right, any other questions? All right, Marvin, we have a few more minutes.
Alter of the parks budget makes up three point two percent of the total uses, shows a decrease of one point two million dollars or eighteen point seven percent. The proposed budget includes an additional point four FTE position to convert a part-time volunteer, volunteer coordinator to full-time. Other areas have changed, again, liability insurance is up, vehicle use fees are up twenty point two percent as they replace vehicles, they're adding them to the vehicle fleet fund. General, the parks expenses are more heavily weighted in the first nine months of the calendar year, just not operations. Lastly, public works is point four tenths of one percent of the, of the total budget, shows a decrease of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars or eighteen point one percent. Budget review is scheduled to continue on October. Finance committee is scheduled to act on the proposed budget. Already scheduled to act on the budget at its, at its meeting. And that concludes our presentation.
Any other questions? Commissioner Antor?
Comment, thank you so much, Marvin and Al and everybody, just thanks for this opportunity. This is always good to be able to kind of tap the brakes and take a look, see where we're at, and I, I do appreciate this very much.
All right, anyone else? Thank you so much, guys, is there any commissioner miscellaneous at all? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned, and our next meeting will be on October eighteen at nine thirty AM following finance. Thanks.